Well, I'm Anne Weeks, I'm the chair. The other members of the board who are here are the rest of the board is here. Dan Pascarello, would you just indicate, just say hello or?
Hello.
There you go, that's Dan. And then the rest of the board, would you just identify yourselves, please, for the folks who are online?
Dave Anderson's here.
Scott Schornberger.
Thank you, and we are one person short due to resignation, which we'll get to talk about later in the agenda, but. The first item is a public hearing on a special, for a special permit. Associated with the site plan review under section two fifty-five thirteen point five of the Wenham zoning bylaws for the construction of a pizza restaurant. And associated signage, parking and lighting. Margaret, I think the the proponents are here.
I believe they are, Anne, I think.
I wonder if before we give them the floor for a little minute, if you would. Tell us what the status is of all of the material you need for this. Before we get going, just give us a couple of minutes on how things sit from your perspective, please.
I think Chris, Chris Vance, I believe is here as the applicant.
Yeah, I'm here.
So, yeah, if anyone who speaks could just identify themselves.
I was asking actually Margaret if you would just give the board a little.
Oh, you want me to?
Yeah, just just tell us where things stand with this proposal before we get going with the applicant, so we have the background, thank you.
Sure, so this is a public hearing for site plan approval and for a special permit for signage. For a project at one forty-three Topsfield Road. The applicant is Wenham Corner Realty. And they're proposing the construction of a pizza restaurant with associated signage, parking and lighting. The applicant had submitted most of the information necessary with their site plan review application. But then we realized there were some things that were still missing, so over the past week, we've gotten some other additional information from them. I was able to send most of it to the board, but I know you don't have, you haven't had a chance to look at everything. What I've asked of the applicant, well, I've told the applicant that I believe we would need site plan. A peer review on this project. The, it seems like they had to add a stormwater facility, a drainage facility. Because of the increased impervious surface with the new structure. So, I mean, we can let the applicant go ahead and just describe the project a little bit. But then I would request that the board ask for peer review. And then I can get this all out to the peer reviewer next week to do some more. Review of the application with the site plan that has changed, so.
Okay, great, and just to be clear, but when you scheduled the public hearing for this, the application was not complete, or it was?
Well, we got, they submitted an application, but then we had not reviewed everything before we scheduled this public hearing. So, we typically will get an application and then we figure we've got most everything we need. So, we put in the public hearing notice to the newspaper, but in this case, a few things came out, like we we've asked now. We did ask for a traffic report, which they've submitted to us, as well as the stormwater report. But that did come in just last week, so we haven't had time to review it. And I would need to ask the applicant for funds to, for a peer review fund in order to have a peer review. Because we don't have engineers on staff that can review that kind of stormwater system.
Okay, thank you, that's that's helpful background. And and I'll I'll turn it over to the applicant at this point, unless anybody on the board has a question for Margaret.
I have a quick question.
Dan, please.
I mean, I'm sure we're gonna get into this, but why do we need a traffic report for this? Is this gonna be de minimis? I mean?
Well, honestly, Dan, it's a requirement of site plan review. So, I did ask for it and they submitted it. And there's probably an increase of forty to fifty tra- trips AM and PM. Additional trips on onto this site AM and PM, so I think that's like a hundred trips a day. We just wanna have the.
We don't, we don't have to get into the weeds, I was just curious why we need, okay.
Yeah, it's a requirement of, it's one of the requirements of site plan approval.
And if I understand where this is, it's right on that corner, so.
Yeah, Maple and Topsfield.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Anybody else, anybody else on the board have a quick question for Margaret before we turn over to the applicant? I can't see all the hands necessarily without taking a second, nope, alright. Trying to find you, Christopher Vance, is that you?
That is me, yes, thank you.
Take the floor for a moment.
Absolutely, do I have the ability to share my screen?
Margaret, can you? Give Chris the screen?
And I'll introduce myself by that, I get permission there, but I'm Chris Vance with Vance Time Architects, business address of eighty-five Sam Fonzough Drive. We also have Mike and Adriana of Wenham Cornerstone or Wenham Corner Realty. And then also our civil engineer, Peter Blaisdell is also on the call to address any questions that come up as we go through the project.
Thank you.
Still don't have the ability to screen share.
Margaret?
You get that, Chris, I just hit allow.
Oh, I got it now, yep, perfect.
We can see it.
Yep, yep, okay, alright, great. Yeah, so I'll I'll give you a little bit of orientation to the site and then walk through the proposed project and the site improvements that we are planning. But as Anne had described, it is at the corner of Maple Street and Topsfield Road. So, there's a light at this intersection. Currently, it's a one-story brick and masonry framed building. You guys probably know there's Winfrey Chocolate is one of the tenants and also the new Town Liquor Store is one of the tenants as well. In the back portion of the building currently is a real estate license or real estate office. So, that's where the proposed addition will be placed. So, here's the existing condition site plan, it's on a point nine five acre lot. There's currently thirty-four parking spaces that are quite underutilized. I have some pictures that I took through different points of the day to look at how many cars are actually occupying the site. And the trips that are are taken throughout some of the peak hours. But here's Maple Street, here's Topsfield Road, this is where the the light is. The site has two, two entrances, one off of Maple Street and one off of Topsfield Road, so they have two large curb cuts. Deliveries currently take place in the rear of the the building here on the southern end of the site. Where there's also two portable dumpsters, that's where trash is picked up, so deliveries and trash. And take place on the southern part of the site. It's a little hard to see, but here on the the west side is the parking area. There are a couple of parking spaces along the corner at Topsfield Road and Maple and also along the east side of the site. Currently, there are a few parking lot lights. We are proposing to add some additional ones for safety, and I'll get into that in a minute. And there's also the existing septic system, which we did have to increase for the new use. Which, if you have some questions on, I can, we can jump into it or Peter can address those. But they have been reviewed and approved by Greg and the Board of Health. So, here are a couple of site photos, so this one's looking from Maple Street to the rear loading area. So, you can see here, there's one of the portable dumpsters. These two back doors where deliveries take place and they have access into the tenant spaces. This view is from the corner, so here's the Town Liquors and Winfrey's Chocolate. You can also see that there's an existing utility pool, it actually cuts through the soffit of the roof. This is proposed to be removed in a new pad mounted transformer. On the corner is gonna be placed, National Grid is currently working through that. So, this condition will no longer exist once that that work takes place. Here's another view looking from Topsfield Road, so Town Liquors and Winfrey's Chocolate. This view over here on the left is where the proposed addition is gonna go. These flags are actually the corners of that addition, so you can see kind of the extent of the the new footprint. And again, this is another view looking towards the parking lot, towards the west, and these flags are where the proposed addition's gonna go. And again, the the site, the the neighbors are pretty far set back from the site, you can see it's pretty heavily vegetated around the parking area. So, it has really good screening, so you know, the the disruptions is gonna be very minimal, especially with the. As the traffic study shows, there will be some increase in trips per day for cars. And then these are some photos I took, so this is looking at. These top photos are looking around lunchtime, so you can see the extent of cars that are parked in the lot, you can see a delivery truck here. But most of the cars park close to the front entry doors, which are along the corner of Topsfield Road and Maple. You can see a couple of cars fill over in the the back lot, but it's really underutilized. Even at five thirty in the evening, you can see there's barely any cars and Wenham Police actually frequent this lot, I think, the most. They're currently always sitting there, but you can see in this photo.
I I happen to know that at Easter, it's pretty busy, but the lot is still not completely full.
Yeah.
Easter being the 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 high point of the candy season.
Yeah, at Winfrey's. Yeah, absolutely, so this is the proposed site plan. So, the shaded area here is the extension of the pizza restaurant, so it's about fourteen hundred square feet. We will be renovating some of the interior space, about eight hundred square feet of that, to make the entire tenant space for the pizza restaurant. We did do some slight modifications to the site here with the parking area. The actual parking count didn't change, we still have thirty-four spaces. And we've also added a van accessible space where the entry of the new pizza restaurant will be. And then we have a couple of compact parking spaces here. This also shows the extent that the septic system needs to be modified. We are adding a grease trap, so there'll be a fifteen hundred gallon grease trap out in the parking lot. We're upgrading the existing septic tank from two thousand to twenty-five hundred. And then we have to add a couple more runs to the leach field. This is the photometric study that we had done to make sure that all of the new site lighting is dark sky compliant. And also won't spill off of the site. It's a little hard to see in this slide, but all of these little dots are a lumen count. So, we've strategically picked lights and directed them so that there'll be zero cutoff at the property lines. So, we're proposing that there'll be six new six-foot tall parking lot lights that are gonna be throughout. This rear parking, parking lot. And we're also gonna leave the existing one that's pole mounted here on the front on the corner of Topsfield Road and Maple. We are gonna have soffit lighting, which are these DL lights here, which is basically a continuation of what exists on the the current building itself. So, there's a a large soffit and there's lights that runs underneath it. So, we'll continue those lights under the front of the the new restaurant. And they're also gonna have some motion activated lights, which again are just replacements of what are there now for safety, especially as employees bring out. Trash at night that they can load into the dumpsters, these these will pop on to provide some safety lighting. And then we're we're proposing a couple of wall sconces at the front entrance of the the building. Quickly, I know this is, this is kind of jumping into the floor plan, but this is the extent of the restaurant addition. So, here's the front entrance, this is the new van accessible parking spot. There will be a curb cut with a slight ramp here that leads to the front door. So, there'll be a six-inch curb for the rest of the parking spots, but there will be a curb cut here. The restaurant does have to comply with MAB, which is the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board. We've designed it to provide amenities and meet the Architectural Access Board criteria. Accessible toilet rooms, unobstructed paths throughout the the restaurant and retail space. These, these are the elevations, so this would be the front elevation of the restaurant. This is a a corner, a glass corner where there's some seating, there's gonna be fourteen seats in the restaurant. It's really geared towards takeout, but there will be some spots that you can wait, grab a slice or a sandwich and sit and finish it in the restaurant. There'll be this flame over the front entrance and I'll jump into the specifics of the signage in a minute. But there'll be a continuation of the Mansard parapet, that's gonna get replaced with some metal roofing. And use similar materials that are existing on the the building now. So, these are a couple of renderings, so here's that that glass corner where there's gonna be some signage. This is facing Topsfield Road, both of these are facing towards Topsfield Road. There'll be a little illuminated flame above the entry door. And again, this roof structure is just really a continuation of the existing roof, so that the height doesn't change. And the the general massing is is similar with the materials. So, we are, we are asking for a special permit for the signage, so this is some details of those signs. So, if we look at the corner here versus Mike's Pizzeria and Grill, there'll be two signs that are about twenty inches tall. By fifty-one and a half inches wide, that would be on each corner of of the building there. And then this is just a rendering showing that they they will be backlit, so at night they will light up and provide some nice illumination. And again, this is the flame, it's about twenty-five inches tall, like twenty-one and a half inches wide, that will be over the front entrance. And again, that will be backlit and illuminated. And then we're also proposing to add a site sign. These are the details here, so it's about ninety-six inches tall to the the granite posts. It will have room for the other two tenants' signs as well, so Winfrey's and Town Liquors. And then Mike's Pizzeria and Grill logo here with some gooseneck lighting to illuminate it at night. And this is a rendering of what it would look like, so I can jump. Sorry to jump back, but basically the site sign will be right located in this area here. So, there's a couple of boulders that are on the site now, it'd be right between those two boulders. And it's also ten feet back from the property line or the public highway requirements. I think that's the end of what I had to go through.
I have a quick question, you had talked a lot about changes you needed to make to the parking area to accommodate septic and. Grease traps and like, how much of the existing vegetation would need to be removed to accommodate all of that?
Zero. Yeah, so the the septic now, the the leach field and the tank are both under the paved area. So, that area will get disturbed, we'll we'll resurface the parking and re-strike the parking. But that is all under the paved area here. There will be some disruptions to the vegetation where we do put the new addition. And then also, we are proposing a Coltech stormwater infiltration system. Which, I had this slide of.
Is located where?
Yeah, it's right.
I've got it on mine, Chris, if you don't have it, that might have been an earlier one.
Yeah, I think this is the earlier one, but it it's basically, you guys can see my pointer, right? Right, yeah, it's right here, you see where it says snow storage? And it says tree stump, it's it's basically right, right here.
Okay. So, there is vegetation being removed along that property line, is that right?
Well, it's under the ground, so temporarily, yes, we'll have to excavate. We put in the Coltech system, which are basically these chambers. And then that, you know, the the soil and and lawn will go back on top of that. And then the downspouts, the leaders from the roof, that all drains into this Coltech system, so that it can then infiltrate back into the site.
And how far, because it's very difficult to see this plan presented this way. And and be really nice if we were back in town hall and we could look at it more carefully. How far it off the property is that, is that? Sort of the eastern corner of the new.
Chris, do you stop sharing for a second, I'll 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 share mine, I've I've got it on there in color, if that's okay with the the board, Margaret specifically.
Yeah, you should be able to.
Okay, everybody can see this?
Not quite yet, there we go.
There we go, here, let me just move up a little bit.
Color's helpful.
Well, Chris, Chris has the architectural flair, I just have a couple of highlighters, that's about it. I think, was that you Anne that asked a question?
It was, I just wanted to know what this dimension was down.
So, it's 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 set about seven, the edge of, the edge of the stone is set about seven feet off the property line. We're supposed to keep it ten feet off the building and we're just trying to keep it, we're just trying to keep the disturbance to a minimum, so we're just trying to. Sneak it in between the edge of the parking lot and here. The these, these items here, as you can see, those those are trees, so we we located the major trees in this area and then this is roughly the drip edge. From, you know, the trees that are behind us. We're trying to put it in, you know, there's a stump here, we're trying to put it in an area that's gonna, you know, causes a little amount of damage as possible.
And and the building itself is, it looks like sixteen, fifteen or sixteen feet off the line, is that correct?
The building itself, yeah, the closest corner is about fifteen foot, five inches and then sixteen feet and then back to about twenty feet. When you get back to the, to the proposed cooler.
Which is pretty much where it is now, twenty feet.
Yeah, it's it's about, the closest corner here is about twenty-two.
Right, okay, thank you, that was my question.
Okay.
I know we're gonna need to. Wait for peer review, so I don't know if other members of the board have questions for the applicant?
I just have one. So, how much of the new footprint is on? Not impervious area, I mean, i- isn't most of this already paved where you're building?
Most of it is already paved, so the area here that the the addition's going on, I believe right now is is just lawn area.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, is that your question, Mr. Pascarello?
Yeah, I was just trying to get an idea of how much the increase in impervious area was.
So, we're we're going to add a fourteen hundred square foot building, the cooler's about a hundred and sixty square feet. We're actually gonna remove some pavement here and some pavement here, but then realign the parking. So, there is an increase in impervious area on the site. And I know one of the questions came up earlier about peer review for for drainage, that type of thing, and that was one of the things I was gonna ask. So, I did go through the towns just to try to see if you had wetland bylaws and elevation, I'm sorry, regulations. I I did look at the planning board's regulations. And I I couldn't quite put a, my finger on exactly what the requirements are for a project of this size. You know, normally, if we had wetland resource areas and that type of thing, we'd have to file a stormwater report with Conservation Commission that would also go to DEP. So, the way I approached this was, I I just tried to keep this as simple as possible. We're adding, we're adding a certain amount of impervious area. Therefore, I calculated how much it would, it would take to essentially just make it seem that there was no change at all to the site. So, and and just to make sure I did that, I actually took one of the downspouts from this section of the existing building and I put it over here as well. The soils here are very good, they're very, there's sands and gravels, so I'm not, I'm not concerned that the recharge isn't gonna be a problem. So, the report, the report that I submitted to, to your, to your board for review. Again, it's it's a very simple one, I I, there's an existing impervious area, there's a proposed impervious area. All the additional impervious area plus some of the original is gonna go right into the ground at a recharge rate. And when we're done, hang on one second, just show one other thing. Didn't seem to work, pardon us. Sorry about that. Oh, this is what I, I apologize. Let me know when you can see this.
Yeah, we got it.
Okay, so I I'm sure you've seen a few drainage reports, so. There's always been certain amounts of storm water runoff for this area, the, you know. Three point one inches for the two-year storm, four point five for the ten-year storm, and then about six and a half inches for the the hundred-year storm. DEP has been asking people, they're adopting, you've probably heard the NOAA fourteen atlas numbers, which are a higher number. So, just to make sure that we weren't playing around, I actually ran the site for both existing and proposed condition for the higher numbers. And this is the comparison for what would essentially be leaving the site, so for the two-year storm. One point two cubic feet per second, the ten-year storm, two point seven, and the hundred-year storm, five point six. By adding the Coltech chambers in to the to the proposed condition. Same thing, one point two cubic feet per second, no increase, ten-year storm, no increase. And then we'd have a slight reduction in the hundred-year storm of point two CFS. And again, just remember, this is a very small amount of of runoff. Any changes less than one cubic feet per second are usually considered de minimis flows anyways. If if you do wanna get a peer review consultant to look at this, I don't know exactly what criteria he would be looking at, because we didn't have to file with DEP. So, it's, it doesn't really require a full stormwater report. I I did look at your requirements, I I think I covered everything that it requested. Again, I ha- I haven't been through this process with you, so I apologize, I haven't, I don't remember the last time I did one in Wenham, so it might be a little learning curve. I I would just say, if you are gonna send this out for peer review, I just think you need to be. You might have to help them kind of figure out exactly what the limit of what they're, what they're gonna review is. I I just approached this as we were gonna have no increase in the in the post-development rates, which is what's called for in your regulations. I do understand that, you know, not everybody on the board is an engineer, or that, I didn't even know you didn't have a town engineer, so I apologize for that. But it's a very simple design, it's a very simple calculation, we're gonna put more into the ground than we're actually adding. And make sure that's a net zero gain for as far as runoff. All of the runoff, the nice part about this too is that none of the runoff from this is gonna head anywhere near Maple Ave or out onto Topsfield Road. Everything's gonna, would be heading back towards the parking lot anyways, but again, all of that's gonna be picked, is gonna be piped directly into the ground.
Thanks, anyone else on the board have a question? Margaret, do you wanna respond to the point about peer review? I I do think it's, it's, we just like to have, because we don't have a town engineer, we do like to have someone confirm that the numbers are correct.
Yeah, exactly, this, it's not an ex- extensive project, we understand that. But we do wanna have someone review it just for accuracy. So, I did get a.
Do you have anybody that you, that you go to?
Yeah, we're gonna use Bert, I think it's Koby or Corey, DGT Associates.
DGT out of, okay.
I have the estimate from them to do the job, it's twenty-seven fifty, so, which is, which is minimal. Typically, we're at five thousand dollars for most of our peer review projects, so. We would ask the applicant to just bring a check in next week and then I can contract with them to do this work and they they'll get started on it right away. Bert already has the documents, so. I did have a question, Anne, so currently, Chris, is there signage or a large sign in front of the building now? With the names of the, the stores that are there?
Uh, no, I can share my screen.
I I wasn't sure if there was one, I know they had. Uh, I, I wasn't sure if there was one. I know they had, um. There had some sign issues on that building for a little while, um.
The only signs are the two that are on the roof line.
Okay, so there is no other large sign in front of the building, okay?
No, I, I think previously there were some temporary signs, but those have all been removed.
Okay, yeah, that was my question.
Yeah, and that, that coal, that coal tech system is basically gonna go right here in this photo. You can see that.
Okay, well, if we, if, if, if you have finished your presentation and Margaret, you don't have anything further, I wonder if there's anyone on. Uh, the Zoom, I see a lot of folks on the Zoom. If there's anyone on the Zoom who. We're in a public hearing, would like to, um, speak to this. Um, if you, if you can, uh, you're on as L, can you please state your name and your address and?
Sure.
Just let us know.
Elizabeth Isaac. Elizabeth Isaac. I live on Topsfield Road, just a few doors down from this proposed site. I'm wondering if anybody else on the Zoom, uh, call does, um. I've, we've lived here for, since two thousand eight, so seventeen years. And since that time, we have seen, um, the traffic increase. Uh, significantly, um, I guess, uh. For, for whatever reasons, uh, it's just, it's just increased. It's a residential area. It's always been a residential. The only businesses on ninety-seven, as far as I know, from Topsfield all the way into Beverly, um. Uh, are, uh, Richdale Drug or former Richdale Drug, which is now the Liquor Store and Winfrey's. And we kinda like it that way, because, uh, we do now get traffic at all hours of the night. And our concern, um, will be, of course, to have a traffic report done. Because, uh, now if we have a pizza place open at all hours of the week and on weekends, the, the traffic is just gonna be worse. Um, including foot traffic, um, from, um, from, from the neighboring streets. So we have some concern there, and we're wondering if the planning board has, is, is going to do any study or, or look into this. Someone mentioned at the beginning of the meeting and someone questioned whether it was necessary. If, uh, if it's possible to do it, we, we would appreciate that being done before anything is, um, is finalized.
Uh, and we did get a traffic study, uh, we got a traffic report, and that's available, um. Uh, Elizabeth, I can, uh, it'll be available on the town's website. So under, on the planning board page. We, we updated it the other day, but I don't think the traffic report got put on there. So I'll put that, make sure that gets put on.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the peer reviewers gonna take a look at that too?
Um, they don't do traffic, um.
What does the traffic study say?
Can you, yeah, walk us through it, please?
Let me, hold on, let me see.
Because it came in late, so.
Yeah. Let me, let me just open it. If you wanna give me one second. Um, the traffic generation report, okay, um.
Okay, maybe Christopher, while she's looking for it, you could talk to us about the expected hours for this business? Do you know that?
I do, yes. Um, so they're gonna be operating from nine AM to nine PM. And it's gonna be Monday through Saturday, so they'll be closed on Sundays. So it's not, it, they're not operating late, um, so it's just nine to nine.
Um, so, and currently, the, the liquor store is open six AM to ten PM? Those are the hours of operation of that liquor store?
I think they also serve coffee in the morning.
Maybe milk, they sell milk.
May- maybe to start off with some milk, yeah, before you, uh, something else.
Yeah, so this is the traffic study. Let me just go down to the, um.
So that's, that's the current condition, the, um. Uh, based on the ITE, um, numbers, that's, that's.
Table one is the current.
All right?
Yep.
And, and look, can I, before you roll to table two, um, the, the unit three general office building. Are those offices gonna stay, or are they being replaced by the pizzeria?
That's being replaced.
Okay, so we can.
Folding, it's folding into, the office space is gonna be incorporated into the, into the.
That's, that's what I had assumed from the floor pan, but I just wanna make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. When we get to the next one, yeah.
Is the real estate office gonna still be there?
No, it's, yeah, it's gonna be a new, it's a, it's a new tenant space. Yeah, it used to be a hair salon. So the actual septic calculations were based on a hair salon.
So this is the, um, new trip generation.
Yes, so, so, um, as you can imagine, it would, it is an increase, uh, for a restaurant, uh, for, for fast food.
And unit two discount supermarket?
No, so. It's, uh, that would be Winfrey's, so unfortunately, um. Not every business has an exact, um, traffic generation.
They don't have one for Fudge Shop?
Yeah. And I'm just gonna say Winfrey's is not discounted.
I don't think it's cheap. We have one here in Middleton as well. Um, so, yeah, we, we, we try to match them up as good as possible. The convenience market, uh, pretty much covered the liquor store, cause it does both. Um, the closest that I could find was, yeah, um. In doing some searches online for like a confectionery or that, that, that type of thing was, was a discount supermarket. Uh, and then, uh, unit, the fast food restaurant without drive is, is pretty common, so. Um, yeah, there, there will be, uh, an increase in the, um, in the, in the peak morning and the peak evening. Um, but I just, just wanna, um, remind everybody that this is the, uh. This is classified as an urban rural road, uh, with a signalized intersection right there. Um, it, it gets a lot of trips per day. Um, so you, you'd have to, you'd have to really increase the amount of trips out of this a lot more. In order to, um, you know, change the level of service, but. Um, that, that being said, this is just a very basic report based on the ITE. This is, this is not based on any traffic counts or, or that, or that type of thing. So it's just a very basic, um, report of the uses now and the uses that we're going to be, just so you can see the change.
Is trip generation the only thing that you have in this report?
Yes.
Okay, so there's nothing about wait time or anything like that, right?
Oh, no, no, that, that's, that's above my pay grade.
So the, the, can you go back to the table we were just looking at? So this category for a unit three fast food, is this just a model? That you've, you've pulled? And so this would be expected for a unit three fast food, a typical? As opposed to?
A typical fast food restaurant, uh, with a, with a, uh, square footage of two thousand two hundred and fifty square feet would have. Those results for AM and PM based on the chart and the, and the.
Okay, so it's, it's not, it's not specifically geared to this proposal, right? It's just a category?
Yes.
Okay, that's why we have the discount supermarket for.
Yeah, I got it. Yeah, it's, yeah, based on category and square footage. Is there any planned breakfast food service for the pizzeria grill? Uh, I would have to defer to Mike and Adriana.
Hi, we can speak on that. Um, we. Go ahead, Mike.
What was the question?
If you can have breakfast.
But people do, you know, for school or before work, they like to come in and, um. Were they're prepping anyways at that time, so we, the doors open if they wanna get a cold sub or if they wanna grab something for work. You know, but we won't have breakfast items specifically.
Okay.
Thank you. Elizabeth, I can't see your face on the, on my screen, cause there's so many people, but I wonder if you have had your questions answered, at least at this point.
At this point, at this point, I have, yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome. Is there anyone else on? The call who wants to speak to this? We'll have, we're gonna continue the hearing, so there'll be another opportunity, but if you're waiting to speak, I'd like to give you the chance. Um. I'm scrolling through all the little Hollywood squares here, and I'm not seeing any hands up.
Yeah, I don't see any hands up either, Anne.
So, Margaret, will you talk?
Wait, Anne, on the traffic.
David, yes.
So. I don't know, maybe, I, I don't wanna overs, look, first of all, I want a peer review on the pizza, okay? I'm excited about some good pizza here for Wyndham, so let's not discount that, all right? There's no fee for that, okay?
We just opened a park right down the street, so.
I mean, it's coming together nicely, but, um. You know, and, and, um, to Elizabeth's point, um, I hear you. I think we all hear you on the traffic. It is ninety-seven. Um, but still, traffic is traffic. As somebody who lives on one A, I'll speak to that. Um, you know, my, my vision, it may be a way, ways down the road, is that we have. This is a, this is a prime location that's accessible by non-motor vehicle. Means, uh, there are paths from downtown all the way out here, or village, whatever you wanna call it. Down to the new park, et cetera, and so. To the extent anyone that would feel so communic- community-minded to add a bike rack. Or something that would allow for kids to come up on bikes or people to get there without using cars, I would think that'd be just tremendous. And hopefully it gets used. I'm still waiting for the bike racks that we were promised at. Uh, Cedar Pond. I don't know that they ever got put in, but that's neither here nor there. My only concern, uh, that, that's not here nor there for this, um. My only concern here is like. I do think there's gonna, and, and this is a comment, this is not a criticism, it's just something for people to think about. I do think that there's gonna be more people coming to this site. And I think there's gonna be quite a few more people coming to this site, and that's a good thing for Wyndham. That's not necessarily a bad thing if it's handled correctly. But the driveway for this is fairly close to the light. And my concern is particularly at peak hours, four to six. There's gonna be, it, are people not gonna, we don't want people blocking ninety-seven. We don't want. I guess people are just waiting in the parking lot to get out on to ninety-seven. A left turn out of there could be a real dicey move, particularly if it's backed up. And someone tries to cut across ninety-seven to go left and can't necessarily see what's coming their way up the road. I, I don't, I, I'm not a traffic engineer. I don't know how to deal with that. I don't know if that makes sense, what I just said, but. I expect this will get a lot of excitement, because I know I'm excited, and I know others that I've spoken to are excited as well. And I just wanna think about if there's anything that we can do here. Maybe we gotta talk to the police department about what they think about this. I mean, is it, uh, can we tolerate a mandatory right turn out of there?
So, Mr. Anderson, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was gonna ask Margaret to comment on that, what the police department has said about this so far.
So, we got a comment from the police chief saying that they may need, um. A police detail during construction, but that was prior to getting the, uh, trip generation report. I sent that to the chief this past, just the other day. I haven't heard back from him.
So perhaps talking to him again, once, once we're through with this hearing tonight. Uh, about, um, how to make sure that the, the flow around this. Building and in and out onto ninety-seven.
Yeah.
Doesn't, because it, it, what I was seeing from the new construction is. It's not likely that you can go around the building behind it once that is there. I mean, you can't now either, but, um. But if there's an act, if, if there's a way of managing the circulation so that you don't have the problems that David is identifying. I think that would be useful to know, and it would be interesting to get the police department's take on it. Cause somebody, somebody noted that they spend a lot of time in that lot now, so I'm sure they. Have a thought, um, yes, go ahead.
So it's about, uh, just to answer, uh, Mr. Anderson's question. So if you were coming out and taking a right, obviously you'd be looking right at the, um, the intersection. It's about a hundred and ten feet from where a car would be exiting to about where the crosswalk is, so. Um, however, if you were to take a left-hand turn. Um, you do have a couple of things, obviously, I mean, we, excuse me, we, we've, we've all, um. Been driving for quite a while, so anybody that's coming towards you, coming from, uh, coming from the left. It's well over three hundred to four hundred feet of, of distance that you can see up the road. So you, 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 you don't have anybody blind coming at you that way. The only problem could be, um, someone coming across the intersection. Uh, if you were to take a left-hand turn, however, like I said, um. It, it's a signalized intersection, so, you know, I'm, I'm sure that, um. Like I said, I, I live in Billerica, that we just redid, uh, Route three A because, um. We, uh, sometimes lead the league in people, um, smacking into each other. Um, but you have to make sure, I, I'd say that you're, you're timing your exit from the building appropriately with the lights. Um, which are right there, otherwise, um, could there be an accident? There, there certainly could be. We didn't look into, um, the Wyndham Police Department to see what their accident records are here. Um, as I said, this is a very simple, just a, um. Uh, pre-imposed, just traffic generation, uh, report. It's not a, uh, it's not an in-depth study, uh, by any means. But you can certainly feel free to ask the, the police department whatever they would like.
I hear what you're saying. I, I'm not sure what you quoted, but if, uh, I don't know who's in control of the screen, it doesn't really matter. That right curb cut, uh, on the east side of the property or northeast side of the property. That can't be more than sixty feet from the intersection. And, no, up top. I'm talking about up top. I'm talking about right there.
Yeah.
That's gotta be sixty feet to the crosswalk, and if someone, these people, you know, they're coming out. It's dinner time, they wanna get home, so they're gonna come out here. And then that backs up in the left turn lane, and they're either gonna block one nine, ninety-seven, or they're gonna try and get over into that left turn lane. That's gonna be a tough situation. Then they get frustrated, and then they whip around the front of the building to exit onto Main to try and take a left. Then we got kids coming out of, out of, out of, uh, Town Liquor, which was a interesting decision for a name. Whipping in front of Town Liquor. Uh, that raises some concerns to me. So do we put, um, soft barriers on? The left turn lanes so that people understand you're not, you're not coming out of this property onto ninety-seven and taking a left? That's not an option. You're gonna be taking a right, and you're gonna be going through the intersection, and you're taking a right on Main. And it may need to be the same way. I mean, I'm not, I'm, I'm Maple, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm just saying. I've been on this road on cars, bikes, and on foot. And for the enthusiasm I have for this business, I really do think it's a big deal. Seriously, I'm not saying, it's a pizzeria in Wyndham, it's a big deal. We gotta prepare for this. Or at least let's hear what the experts say, whether it's, you know, police chief or whatever, let's talk to somebody who kind of sees these things and understands it. And think about some solutions that will keep this safe for everybody. That's, that's all I'm trying to do, is make sure that this doesn't turn into a, a mess for. For these folks that are investing a ton of money in this, and for the town that's, that's really excited to receive them.
Elizabeth Isaac here again. I would support David's, David's comment, because, uh, right now, uh, we have backups. We live, we live, oh, I don't know, I, I can't say how many yards, but we live four houses down from this intersection. Um, going south toward Beverly, so, uh, yeah, right, right there. So, um, well, actually, just right, right there. Next, not that big one, but right next to it, on the right side. No, this, there you go. And so we have backups that far away, um, in the afternoon, starting at three thirty in the afternoon on the weekday. And that's coming both ways, because you've got backups also on Cherry for people, uh, exiting, coming out from one A, exiting, going over to Danvers. Um, how, going, going home that way. And, um, both ways, traffic is backed up both ways. So that is gonna be an issue. Um, there's no, uh, there's no ru- uh, right on red, right in front of there where that hand is. Uh, coming from Maple, taking a right on Topsfield, there's no right on red. Um, and somebody turning. Uh, left is gonna have trouble, um, making that left-hand turn if they're going, uh, north on ninety-seven to Topsfield. So I think a, a view by traffic, uh, when a police would be a, a good idea.
Um, one other area that I'm concerned about is people turning left into the building, uh, into the property. From here, where if, if this light is green, you know, these people are gonna start backing up if they can't. Get around them, you know, like, there's, there's. get around them, you know, like, there's, there's a, an extra lane here for people turning left, um, onto Cherry Street, but then people who wanna turn left into this restaurant may get, you know, they may cause a little backup here. I don't know whether we wanna think about opening this lane to two ways, um, to get them off, but. Um, I will have the police look at this for sure, and then, um, if we need further review, we can, you know, if he feels that we need.
I, I would, I, I would also wa- wonder whether, I mean, we, we've been talking about this as though we're absolutely limited to just that one entrance where it's located now, as opposed to an in and an out. Whereas where the in might be a little further away from the intersection.
Well, I looked at that, I mean, there's a utility pole there in a tree, and I don't know what that does to options. Certainly if we were to move, if it were possible to move it down toward that end, that would assist with this whole conversation, to the extent that's, you know, interesting to the applicant.
What's, what's on the lot to the left, though?
We, we, two things, Mr. Anderson, one, you can't, you can't just, you need to get Mass DOT approval to add entrances, and secondly.
State highway, right? Yeah.
It is.
So, and, and secondly, that's where the septic system is, and I don't think we wanna be adding entrances or exits with the septic system.
Oh, I see, I see.
Dave, I, I agree with you, Margaret, I agree. We, we obviously have to wait to hear from the police department.
What they say.
But, and, and I, Ms. Isaac, I agree that the traffic, I, I'm aware, the traffic is pretty bad. Now, at certain times during the day. However, I have less concerns about this, because it's not like you're, you're dropping in a business where there is no business existing, right? There are two existing businesses here. There's, Rich Dills has been there, or was there for, for years and years, right? So, I, I think from what we saw on the traffic generation report, that, and this is no slight on the future business, but these are gonna be de minimis trip increases. Um, so, I, I think we just need to wait to hear from police on this.
Okay, that's good.
Well, and, and please understand, I'm excited about this. I think we've identified this as a site that can have increased utility to the town, and a restaurant is certainly one of those options, so. I'm in favor of this, I just wanna make sure that it goes over smoothly and everyone's on board with it, so let's just look at it.
Yep, I think that's great.
Find solutions.
Yeah. Does Wyndham have a traffic, does Wyndham have a traffic safety officer?
Well, we have our police department who regularly look at development for us and tell us what they think, so. Margaret, do you wanna talk about the process going forward? Cause I think we have to ask for continuance of the public hearing.
Yep, we would ask the applicant to, um, approve a continuance of the public hearing, and then you would vote to continue it to the next meeting in December. And, um, request that the peer review funds be dropped off next week, so that I can get started on it.
I think we should talk about the peer review first, before we just jump to that.
Okay.
Um, because I'm, I'm a little unclear on what we're asking to have peer reviewed.
Yeah, I can show you that, Dan, hold on. Hmm, there it is. Okay, so this is a copy of what they would do. They would review the, um.
This is from our peer reviewer, right?
Yes, yep.
But, but what are we, what do we think needs peer review here?
So the site plan itself shows this new stormwater system. Um, we can have them review for the parking, um, the stormwater, whether those calculations, what they, what they mean. Um, again, it's not a heavy lift, um.
Yeah, my, my, my consideration about this would be that. So in my experience, when I was doing this, which I don't anymore, we would send it down to the town engineer and say, can you just look at this and confirm that all the numbers are correct? But Wyndham doesn't have a town engineer, so we have to send it out to someone else to confirm the numbers are correct, which is not to cast dispersions on anyone. Um, it's just to be, you know, do our due diligence as, as, as we should on development like this.
No, I, I, I understand, and normally I, I wouldn't have an issue with this. I just feel like we're reflexively saying, here's a permit application, there are numbers, we need to peer review this. Where the only thing I think needs peer review might be drainage. Um, I didn't, I didn't see anything else in this report that would require peer review. I mean, we can certainly count the number of parking spots and look at our regulations, right? So, but, and I, I'm just, I'm raising this from, I, I don't think we should just so easily toss a three thousand dollar expense on a special permit application that might not require it. Um, if it's, if, if all we're worried about is the drainage, then let's limit it to the dr- maybe that's a lesser cost for the applicant.
Basically all, that's what it is, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I did speak with Mike Novak, who, who typically does this for, um, Wyndham, who, he said he would be willing to take a look at it as well.
Mike, Mike Novak doesn't review, do peer review for Wyndham. He's on the conservation commission.
Right, and he, he can look at the stormwater calcs.
Well, I mean, you guys, if you don't wanna have a peer review, that's fine, we can go with whatever.
No, no, I, I just think the board should discuss it, that's all, and, and I did, Chris, I have a question for you. There's no, there's no wetland on the property, right?
No.
No, no, okay.
I, I'm just not comfortable giving you guys, um, reviewing this myself and saying that these numbers are accurate, and that the stormwater system is gonna work, um, but it's, it's up to you.
I, I do think it would be helpful to, you, you've, it, the scope here was put together by the peer reviewer, correct?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Right, so this, item three, a traffic review will be performed by others, did?
Yep.
Is that a separate peer review? No.
No, we, I didn't think we needed a peer review for the traffic report, because the police department can look at that. But if you think that's even more.
I just wanna be clear that this twenty-seven fifty is the only additional cost.
Yep, that's it.
Margaret, can, can you scroll down a little? I'm just wondering how many, and again, I, I, I get peer reviewed all the time, so I certainly don't take any type of affront to this, that's, that's part of my job. Um, I'm just curious, like, how many hours he's budgeting to this, because the, this, this, um. I, I did this report, um, you know, probably in under a day. Um, I, 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 you know, with the amount that, again, I don't know how much he's charging an hour, if he's charging, if he's charging two days to do this, I think that's.
They have a four-hour minimum. There's a four-hour minimum, right? So, in an hour, four-hour minimum.
No, that's the, that's the ser- that's a survey crew. Um, so I'm just looking to see.
This is, this is typically what we do, we send it out, they send it back to us and tell us, this is all, he, he has the plans. He's looked at them, and he can tell you how long it will take, and this is what he's come back with, for how long it will take him to review it. If you don't want to do it, if the board doesn't want this done, that's fine. I just wanna make sure you understand that we don't have any other way to review these numbers, so.
Can you scroll down just a little bit?
I, I think where you're putting a new drainage system close to a property line. It, it's a good idea to have it peer reviewed, personally, if, if I were the neighbor.
Well, but, well, Mike is his own neighbor.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, Anne, it's, it's a, it's a Coltech system, right? So it's, it's basically, it's just a big chamber.
It's a flop and play, I know, but.
Yeah, and, I, I mean, i- it's not like we don't have any certifications before us, right? We have a stamped plan from a professional engineer who's vouching for these numbers. It's just, if, if our, if our only concern is, are the drainage numbers correct? Which it sounds to me like that's the only thing we're peer reviewing. Um, is three thousand dollars a reasonable charge for that?
It, it, again.
An engineer.
Well, I can tell you right now that this, this, that's about twice as much as it took me to generate the report. Because it's very simple, all I, all I did was take the amount of impervious area that we were taking. It's, and again, like, like Mr. Pascal just said, this is, and obviously, um, Anne knows a little bit about this, is that, that there are virtually plastic drywalls that get put in on the ground. This is not a subdivision, this is not a, you know, a huge residential, um, development, or a cluster, or, um, a forty B, or anything like this. It's, it's a, a fourteen-hundred square foot building on a, a forty-thousand acre lot with parking, none, none, none of that's changing.
With existing impervious surface. I, I, I'm wondering, Margaret, if you can explain, so how does the, the? Is the twenty-seven outside envelope number, and if it doesn't all get spent, it gets returned to the develop, the, the proponent?
Yeah, we ask.
How does that work?
Fund, yep, they, they submit the funds, and then we spend it as the engineer sends us bills. And if they don't spend it all, we return the extra to the applicant. It's doubtful that they wouldn't use up all of these funds, though.
Does the, so see that this is five pages total? Is there a line item cost down lower anywhere, where you're saying the specific number of hours spent as opposed to what they charge by the hour?
Hmm.
No?
No, we don't usually get that, they, they don't estimate the number of hours it's gonna take them. They look at the project as a whole and give us an estimate that way.
I mean, based on the description of work, sorry, based on the description of work, it looks like a lot of this time is gonna be providing the reports to us.
Mm-hmm.
Not actually, you know, the review and the.
Yeah, they'll, they'll have to do the reports and attend a meeting. They'll come to your next meeting with their report and explain to you what they found.
So, uh, from what I've heard, I, I would suggest this discussion among the board, that we consider, maybe we allocate a lesser sum for peer review, we don't require everything that they're proposing here. We just get confirmation that the numbers work.
As basically item one point one, and, um, some sort of summary of the findings.
I, yeah, I don't, I.
Can I, I just ask a question, because this is obviously our first time doing this, but I, I'm under the impression that us hiring an engineer to, to construct this um, stormwater and to actually do his research on what we require for the stormwater, that, you know, this peer review is something new to, you know, just forgive me for being, for asking the question, but, you know, the, 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 the money, it's a big, big thing, that's a lot of money. And we've already paid our engineer to, you know, come up with this system for us. Like he said, it's negligible, it's just a small little footprint that we're actually going a little bit more than what would be needed. Um, it's just, you know, that twenty-seven hundred is, is, we're funding this out of our own po- all the preliminaries are coming out of pocket right now for us, so that's like a huge, um, you know, it might seem small in the scope of this large project, but we are funding out of pocket all this preliminary stuff, and that's like an, a huge expense that hasn't been allocated for us yet, and it's.
Yeah, and I think.
Something that's questionable, that maybe we don't need it, we would, you know, that would be huge to just, you know.
I, I think, I, I, Andrea, I think, if I can interrupt, I think what you're hearing from the board is a very similar feeling about this, um, that we would like a little bit more specifics justifying the amount of money. Um, and, you know, I think there's, there's understandable concern about the cost of development in Wyndham. And, and so if this is a place where we can think about trying to alleviate some of that. On the other hand, Wyndham doesn't have a town engineer, and, you know, if we did, we would just hand the plans to them, and it would cost you nothing. Um, I do think we have a responsibility just to confirm the numbers are correct. Whether it costs twenty-seven hundred dollars or not, I can't say, but, but I do think there is, you know, we, we really ought to be confident, and again, it doesn't cast dispersions on anybody. I'm confident, you know, that we'll come up with nothing problematic, but it, there, there is this tension about the numbers and where they came from. I wonder if we can ask Margaret for a breakdown and maybe get this number down a little bit?
Right, or have, or possibly have them perform the work, put in the hours, or, you know, give a, give an estimate, and then.
I can't, I can't have an, a peer reviewer do any work until the funds are actually with the town. It's mass general law.
Right.
It doesn't allow me to contract with them.
It's not, it's, it's not the same thing as hiring.
No, I can't, I can't have them do something and then pay them later.
But you can ask him before we start to get a breakdown that's a little bit, you know, more detailed.
Yeah, I can do that.
On this one, particularly since it is, does seem pretty minimal. He's not doing anything on traffic, he's not doing anything on the septic system, that's, that's the Board of Health. It's basically just confirming that everything's as it's.
And, yeah, and if the board's, if the board's comfortable with what the, this engineer has submitted, you don't need to require a peer review. Um, you know, it's, it's entirely up to you, you don't have to require it.
I, we're hearing you say, Margaret, as the staff, that you would feel more comfortable if there were a peer review. And that was the conversation we started off with, so. That being the case, I wonder if we can just go back to the peer reviewer. And I'm sorry, this has to be a burden on you, but go back to the peer reviewer and just say, can you itemize a little bit more carefully, so that this seems a, a little expensive to us?
So then, if he does that, this won't be brought back to you until the next, um, meeting in December, and then, then I would have.
We just need to authorize, I think, the fact of peer review. We don't need to authorize the dollars and cents of peer review, is that correct?
Yeah, yep, we can do that, and then I can, um, work with the, the applicant to, um, get that number down, or.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Cause I, I think the applicant's gonna wanna move this process along and not wait for another month for us to figure out what we're gonna pay the peer reviewer. So, I would, I would make a motion that we authorize up to a thousand dollars for peer review at this point. Just to confirm the drainage numbers that we're concerned about. And either it gets done within that budget, or it doesn't, and then we can come back, and if it's more, we can request more.
Okay, so, um, so I would have to have the applicant just give me those funds.
Well, I think the board would have to vote on it.
I would, um, second that motion, Dan, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Alright, so you want to authorize up to a thousand dollars a period?
We have, um, there's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded, I think we need to vote. Okay, all in favor, weak says aye.
Pascoe, aye.
Anderson, aye. Bruce Scott.
Scott?
Uh, I said I'm having issues here.
Audio issues, okay, thank you. Okay, so that's, that's that, Margaret, and now, I think we need to.
Is the applicant willing to give us a thousand dollars, so I can, or do you want me to just talk to the peer reviewer and see what they can do for a thousand dollars?
Yeah, so we can, we, that, that's more manageable, you know, we can, um, is it, is it, the office is closed tomorrow, or the?
Yeah, we're closed tomorrow.
Let me, I mean, if you can reach out to them and see what, you know, if they can just do whatever the board suggested with the strange stormwater, and then we could drop the check Monday if that's the case.
Right, and it's up to a thousand dollars, if they can, if you can impress upon them that this is a small business, and if they could do it for less, it would be, we would be thrilled. It doesn't seem like a big amount of work to us, so.
Alright, I will, I will check with them.
Well, the other thing too is, um, you know, do you really need them to show up at a meeting? Cause usually a night meeting, um, everybody's charging way more than a normal standard hour.
Right, and they give us, if they give a reason.
Back from them, a letter might suffice.
Yep, yeah, we could do that, I'm sure they could just give us a letter, and, and then I would bring it to the board.
Yes, I'm guessing that's where they will cut out that additional amount of money.
I'd be happy with an email.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, okay. Emoji, an emoji, either thumbs up or thumbs down.
Well, something signed.
We, we do need to move on, we have more items on the agenda. Um, we need a continuance of this hearing, and we need to vote on the application in, at our next meeting, so, uh, well, hopefully, our next meeting. Um, so, Margaret, do you wanna work on that?
Be December eleventh, if you wanna make a motion to continue to December eleventh. Um, does the applicant give permission for the board to continue?
I think we need permission, yeah, that's.
Yes.
Yes, they, they give permission.
Alright, great.
Yes.
So it's, uh, Thursday, December eleventh.
You need to get an email or something like that in writing, right, Margaret?
Yeah, I'll, I'll work with them for, with that.
Thank you. Alright, so then we, I, I need a, a, a motion to continue the public hearing, um, with the permission of the applicant to December eleventh at seven. um, with the permission of the applicant to December eleventh at seven P M.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing, uh, until December eleventh at seven P M.
Second. All in favor, weak says I.
Pascoe, I.
Anderson, I.
Chumbrer, I.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
And thank you to all the folks who have been waiting patiently online for the rest of the agenda.
Thank you so much.
All right, so the next, the next item is in the administrative calendar, um, a discussion with Kelly, Kelleher and Sandozki, the real estate firm representing the Academy of Penguin Hall and possible reuses of that property. Um, Margaret, do you want to kick this off or do you want to turn it over to the, uh, folks from Kelleher?
Sure, yeah, um, I believe, um, Andrew.
Yeah, I'm here, Margaret.
Yeah, Andrew's here from, um, the real estate firm representing, um, the sale of this property, so I think, yeah, Andrew Sherman, if you, I, I didn't receive anything from them, you know, as far as information goes, so they just wanted to meet with you informally to talk about what's, what's happening there and get some feedback, I think.
Hey, Andrew, before you get started, let me just, let me just make a disclosure. Um, I do not believe this rises to any sort of conflict, this is an informal presentation to us, but I am an attorney, I have filed a claim on behalf of a creditor in this bankruptcy proceeding, somebody who is a former staff member, so I just want that um, on the record, okay?
So I will, uh, I, I, I will be short, uh, myself, Phil Desmoni.
Okay, and before you start, just because we're being, uh, recorded, would you just state your name again for the record so that that person transcribing will have all the detail she needs, thank you.
Absolutely, so my name's Andrew Sherman, uh, with Kelleher and Sadowski, we are, uh, the brokerage firm representing the school and the, and the bankruptcy sale. Myself, along with Phil Desmoni and Ross Minor, Jim Humphrey, who couldn't make the call, uh, the meeting tonight, uh, are helping the school, uh, market the site. Also with us is, um, Christopher Condon, who is the bankruptcy attorney, uh, for this process, so, um, I, I think I, I do myself disservice by talking any longer, I think I'm going to kick it over to Chris. Chris is far more experienced in these, um, processes and these types of sales, so Chris is going to help just elaborate on the process and kind of the, the, the future, um, the, the next steps of the, of the site.
Hi, uh, my name is Chris Condon, um, I'm a bankruptcy attorney, uh, at Baudage and Dewey. I've been doing bankruptcy cases, uh, all over New England for twenty five years. Obviously, Baudage is an old firm, uh, Mr. Pascarello, I don't have any problem with you being here today or being on the board. Um, I'd like to thank you for hosting us, this was my idea, so if anybody wants to blame somebody for us appearing, it was my idea. Uh, I just thought it would be useful, uh, given the circumstances, just introduce myself, um, and I know you've been dealing with some of the people at Kelleher and Sadowski and talking to them and talking to some of the people who are looking at the site. I don't have anything particularly formal or anything, uh, I'm, I'm not a real estate attorney, uh, I don't know anything about, um, planning or anything like that, but I have done a lot of similar real estate bankruptcy cases, uh, like this. Obviously, the school, uh, you know, through some unfortunate circumstances, uh, had, had to file for bankruptcy in order to try to, um, protect some of the value, it has a lot of creditors, uh, including some parents, you know, or families who had, uh, paid tuition to the school, uh, including some employees who unfortunately at the end, uh, were unable, you know, could not be paid because there wasn't sufficient funds to pay them. And, um, you know, it's my job to sort of come into these situations and try to make something, um, you know, good out of something unfortunate. And, um, you know, I, 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 um, personally have had some success, I believe, in the sort of bankruptcy process. And, uh, I, uh, like I said, I just wanted to uh, introduce myself, uh, obviously Baudage is an old Massachusetts firm, obviously Kelleher Sadowski is a Massachusetts uh, real estate firm, uh, and we're trying to really help the people who are the creditors here, who are, some of them are local people, uh, some of them less local, but all, you know, all relatively local people and try to maximize the value of the site to try to pay people. Um, we would posit that the alternative is a foreclosure by the principal lender who, uh, you know, not that this is illegal or anything, but is an entity who purchased the debt from the, from the other lender in order to try to, you know, foreclose and or maximize the value, so, you know, we obviously commenced the bankruptcy to try to, uh, again, uh, you know, get as much money to the creditors as possible, which is really what our goal is here. Um, I don't know if anybody has any experience in bankruptcy sales, uh, but I just again, wanted to introduce myself, we have, uh, a very accomplished, uh, brokerage firm helping us market the property, um, and, you know, we have a lot of sophisticated developers looking at the site, I think probably, uh, as I think everybody could guess, they want to take advantage of the particular zoning for the site, I think is the most likely, uh, scenario for a purchaser. Uh, we don't know who the purchaser is going to be yet, um, but there's some unique circumstances, uh, I think, given the bankruptcy and I just, uh, that people, um, that we may need to, uh, try to accelerate the process as much as possible. But again, I think we're trying to seek a good result for the community and the town, um, and the creditors at all at the same time, so I guess my message to you is, again, to introduce myself and say that I'm sort of here to try to help you, uh, help us if you, if you will. And so I didn't know if anybody had any questions, uh, you can contact me now, you can talk to me now or contact me later, whatever you want, um, but I'm just here to make myself available to you.
Yeah, I, I think this board is interested in the land use aspects of what happens to the, to the site and, uh,
Sure.
Sort of hoping that somebody might have some presentation of some kind about what's being considered. Um, or premature.
Yeah, I'm sorry that I, again, we don't have that yet, I just, given the timing of everything that was going on, I just sort of wanted to get on the agenda and I know the Pats are playing tonight and I don't want to keep everybody's time, I just wanted to keep it short and just, I, as I said, just say we're working on it, we're here and I'm willing to communicate with you and as is Kelleher and everyone else.
Okay, are there questions from board members?
Well, how can we help you?
We, we hope it's a Pat's win for everyone and the site.
That's right.
We, we can't, we can't do anything about that.
No, so, uh, all I want to say, uh.
We would need a little more information to figure out what we're doing, I think you can see from the agenda that th- this whole area, uh, geographically in Wenham is one of particular interest right now, the select board is thinking about what to do, there's been an iron rail study done and there's some thoughts about what's happening there, so all of the planning board, you know, with our scope is land use and how things are, um, how development occurs and, you know, uh, so, so for, for us at this point, it's good to know what the process is, um, several of us are attorneys, so we, we have at least a fleeting understanding of, from our um, law school days of what bankruptcy process is, um, but, you know, we, we really will engage when it's a little clearer about what's going to happen with the property from the perspective of the buyer.
Um, that's, yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that question, I appreciate that. Um, like I said, I, I wasn't sure where we're going to be in the process and I just sort of wanted to.
Um, right, I appreciate that, early is better.
So that's, that's where we are, we'll have more for you later, that's why we don't have any more materials for you than, um, than I think some of this stuff that you, that you've already seen at the, um, but, uh, again, um, you, you know where to find me if something comes up and, um, we're gonna, you know, obviously keep the board involved as early and as often as possible.
Thank you. Anybody else on the board have any questions from Mr. Condon? Or Mr. Sherman, I guess, or anyone else? No, well, thank you for.
Actually, can I say one thing?
Go ahead, David.
Well, I would just say that, uh, the site itself has an interesting, um, classification by the I L O D, um, but it's also an extremely um, strategic site. It has tremendous access relevant to Wenham. Uh, it's adjacent to the sports fields and iron rail and something's going on there, it's next to a site that is, um, severely underutilized. Meaning the Sisters of Notre Dame, I don't know what their long-term plans are. Um, I see potential in this area and as I sit here personally, the things that get me excited are people who see potential, you know, the most community potential here that is possible. And that's pretty abstract and this whole thing is abstract right now, but I'll just share that perspective in my head.
Yeah, I mean, I think ultimately what you're going to see is, um, as I said, some, uh, a proposal from a very, um, sophisticated, uh, developer. Um, and I, you know, I, I don't know exactly what that proposal is yet, but those are the people who are interested in the site. Um, it's generated a significant amount of interest and, um, I, I've been there, I like it, I agree with you, it is a unique access point, just given its, you know, proximity to the highway and everything else, uh, but yet is, um, relatively secluded and, um, beautiful, so. Uh, anyway, I think what you're going to see from us is, is something, um, again, sophisticated, developed, uh, you know, and for you to consider.
Um, Ian, I do have a question, Mr. Condon, do you have any sense of when these, this property might change hands?
Well, I'm, I, I think, uh, there, I, I don't because of the permitting issues. So, uh, it, it depends on.
What do you mean when you say permitting issues?
Well, it depends on whether or not the, uh, prospective buyer would close, uh, with or without permits.
So they would want their permits from the town before they close, they would.
They may.
Possibly enter into purchase and sale.
Right, well, I think they would enter into a purchase sale agreement, but there would be contingencies on closing.
Hmm, okay.
Thank you, that's helpful.
All right, thank you very much again for hosting us, I don't want to kick anyone more time, um, but.
Well, you're welcome to stay on if you want to hear the next conversation is about iron rails, so.
You're good. All right.
And thank you for sitting through the, the first hour.
No, thank you.
Yeah.
It's nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you too.
Meeting you.
So the next two items are really together, the Grapevine Road Essex Street area and you know, the recommendations, this, this, this is completely accurate, I, as I, I think at this point, the select board hasn't made a recommendation for iron rail, they've, um, recommended more study, so, but Margaret, maybe you can.
Yeah, I put, I put this on the agenda before the select board met last week, um, they just decided to create a working, a working group, um, to review the, um, the study and then make recommendations.
Seems pretty, uh, disappointing, I feel like this is just avoidance of decision-making at this point, we have commissioned studies, I mean, I was on the finance committee, they did a whole financial study, they, they use study, we have the iron rail commission, I, I don't, I know it's not within our purview, but I've not, it's not like, what, what is the outcome, are they, are they saying that because of this new committee, they have to make a decision now or, you know?
I think that's what their goal is, that this new committee will come back with the final decision about what, what the, um, town wants to do about it.
I mean, if, if I'm, if I'm trying to find the silver lining here, it seems to me that with the Penguin Hall property with the question about what happens to that, um, may be something that needs to be considered. You know, alongside what happens to iron rail.
Hmm.
Um, and so having those go in parallel is not a bad thing. Um, i- is there, is there any suggestion that a planning board member would sit on this commission? Cause I.
Yeah, I think they.
Perspective on, you know, the master plan and just the conversation we've been having the last, what, half an hour is a good illustration that, you know, this is kind of a pivotal spot in the community and, and, and the board really ought to have a representative.
I, yeah, from what I heard at their meeting the other night, they, they would, um, I think they would appreciate a planning board member sitting in on that, is anyone interested? I can let the select board know.
I mean, I would, I, I'm actually kind of interested in this one, unless someone else wants to put their hand up, I don't want to.
Um, I do want to.
And we're, we're, we're one member short now, which we will get to discuss in a minute, but.
So Kate Mallory is on, on the call, Kate, um, her name was brought up at that meeting also, Kate, I don't know if you're, are you there, can you, um, do you, did you talk to Steve Adal about what he thinks the, the select board wants to do with this group?
Yes, I think it's more of like, uh, kind of finalizing the plan. I'm sorry, everybody, I'm, I have a head cold, but, um, it's more of finalizing the plan, so kind of um, taking all of the, the feasibility study that was done, um, the iron rail commission's recommendations and then this working group would kind of just finalize everything, they gave until May to do this, and so it wouldn't be something that would be going, um, to April town meeting or anything like that, I think it would be the next town meeting after that that would happen and absolutely the planning board would be involved in that.
Did, did they talk about membership and how many people and all of that?
They did a little bit, but then they ultimately said that Steve Pullos would be the decision maker.
Okay, and.
And I, I think if you're interested, Anne, I think it's the chair's prerogative, so.
Well, I, yeah, maybe. I'm just, I'm just like, really, really, I'm a bit to do this.
I second and doing it.
All right, I, I will do it, um, can you let Steve know that we would like to have a member?
Absolutely, and I, I think that makes.
Or whatever it's calling itself.
Yeah, I think that makes sense and I think that was kind of what was implied at the select board meeting last time, so, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll let him know. Thanks, thank you, Kate.
So I, I don't know what more is to be said about the Grapevine Essex Street area, um, at this point, I, it, it do, do folks want to have an open-ended conversation about that or do we want to decide that we have expressed interest enough and concern enough about what happens there that we have done our, our job for tonight on that item on the agenda?
I'm comfortable moving on.
I am too, I would just say, and I don't know if I said this in a prior meeting, but I invite anybody to take a zoom out on, um, the parcel and look more broadly at the parcels that surround it and the opportunities there. There's a lot going on in that area, uh, there's some upland, uphill, upland properties. There's a lot and, uh, you know, the fact that that parcel's, you know, in a distressed position is a little bit unfortunate as it may, the timing may preclude the opportunity to be more creative and more expansive in terms of the development opportunity, but it is what it is and there's, there is a lot going on there and you could imagine it being kind of an eastern hub for the Wenham community if it were done right.
Can I just ask a terminology question, Dave?
Um, yes, sir.
As you're using the Grapevine, Grapevine Road slash Essex Street area, is it, so if we sort of used iron rail as the center and drew a half mile radius, is that what we're talking about roughly?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the Beverly Line is what, you know, half mile down or whatever and.
I just wasn't sure what, Grapevine's a long road, so.
Yeah, no, I think it's that corner and it's the Penguin Hall piece and it's the, um,
The Sisters of Notre Dame.
Soccer fields and the sisters.
Yep, I got it.
And, and.
And there's a meditation center there.
And, you know. And, you know, I'm not talking about anybody to land, but I'll just say the parcel to the west of that is a forty-five acre uphill parcel with one single-family home on it. Maybe it's not forty-five acres, but it's massive.
Do you want to look up the map?
There's also a, there's also a house right in the corner of um, Grapevine and twenty-two. Like just between the, the sister, there's the sisters, and then there's kind of a, I think a creek, and then a house right on the corner.
Right.
So, but yeah, there, it's the whole region. The question is, what's the, what's the plan there? Um, and there's quite a lot of wetland, as you can see, if you look at the um, the Dodson report, that it, it's not as big a parcel develop, i- if you think about the, the developable area, it's not as big as it looks, the iron rail portion, and there's.
Oh, no. Yeah.
Right, so, and the, the, I think the other thing that I haven't heard discussed is the cemetery and whether or not the current limits on the cemetery is where they expect that to end, or whether they have an expansion plan. So I don't know enough about that either at this point, but uh, the, I will say that looking at the, the study, it was sort of like you can do this or you can do that, and then I, I was thinking, well, you could do a little of this and a little of that, and it's not mutually exclusive, but I guess we'll see where that goes. Um, as we start talking about it.
Okay.
Um, okay. So, the you've got your finger on the highlighted thing, but I think we still have the subdivision
Yeah.
regulations to, just a quick update there.
Quick update, yep. Um, so we had our check-in meeting with Innis Associates the other day. Um, they've got all of your comments. They've taken those all in. Um, they have the the whole document in Word now. Uh, it took them a little while to do that. They, so they figure by December second, they should have gone through all of the focus groups uh, comments. They're starting the focus groups this week. They had the, I think they had the first one today. I sat in on one with um, the developers for forty-seven Maple Street. Um, and then they've, they're scheduling everyone else over the next week or so. Um, so they figured December second, they'll have gone through all of the comments. They'd like to have their first draft to you by the week of December eighth through the fifteenth, and then they'll come to your January eighth meeting um, with that draft to discuss it and get your comments. And then they would like all of your comments due around January fourteenth, but all these dates will be.
That's a very fast turnaround at the holiday, but.
No, no, yeah, it's after, after the holidays, we'll.
Yeah, okay. I wonder if you, um, there's, there's another holiday, the King Holiday is in there too. I wonder if you would back up a step and talk about who, who's on these peer review groups?
Focus groups?
Yeah, but, sorry, um, my head is still.
Yeah, it's a lot of staff, all the staff people from all the different departments, as well as representatives from the uh, different boards and committees. We have someone from conservation. There is someone from the climate action group. Um, they, I think they reached out to ZBA, um.
And you said they were meeting with developers, that's.
Yeah, and we had, um, the two developers from forty-seven Maple Street, met with them today, and when, you know, just Innis Associates has questions that they're asking them about their experience with um, subdivision development in Wenham, uh, what kinds of things they, they felt worked and what, what were difficult for them, so they went through those. We also have asked Peter Gordo to uh, meet with them, and I believe he's doing, he's gonna be meeting with them sometime next week.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so those uh, focus groups are happening online, um, virtually on Zoom. And I think they're also talking about setting up a um, a place where the staff can go and meet with them. They're gonna set up for a day either in town hall or at the library, and staff, they'll just schedule staff to come in and actually talk to them.
Right.
And, um, okay. So if, unless somebody has a question about that, let's move on to the highlighted forty-seven Maple Street request.
So I can.
Actually, these are two requests, as I understand it. One is the irrigation system and the other is an error of some kind.
Yeah, so um, we got a email from the, an attorney who represents the buyer of lot one, which is the existing farmhouse that's been renovated. They put an irrigation system in, the developer put one in. Um, the new buyer was concerned whether that irrigation system should be connected to town water supply, which they had done. So we got confirmation that yes, this lot is subject to the planning board's decision, and it should not be tied to the uh, town water, the irrigation system. The developer's been notified of that, and they're gonna work that out with the buyer to have, they're gonna have it removed from um, the town water supply and either put a well, uh, the developer, I think most likely will be paying for the well to put in um, for the irrigation system. So that's not an issue anymore. They're, they're all been notified that they do have to comply with the decision. The um, the attorney sent us and has some concern about some of the language in the decision that refers to a, the covenant. Um, I wasn't quite sure what they meant, but we sent it to Robin to review it. She hasn't gotten back to us, but she does have that. So she'll look at that and let us know whether the affidavit could be signed by the board and whether they're, they're implying there's a Scrivener's error in the um, the decision. So, uh, but Robin has it, she's looking at it, and she'll let us know.
And, and that's on a completely different point to this.
It has, it has nothing to do with the irrigating system, right? No.
Okay, well, uh.
Can we amend something like that by affidavit? Doesn't have to be, I mean, wouldn't it have to be an amendment?
I think if it's, if it's just a Scrivener's error, can it just be amended by an affidavit? I don't think it has to go through the whole process of amending the decision.
Probably, the affidavit is probably fine.
Yeah, one, one would, one would wanna know precisely what it was. It's kind of hard to.
I think it was just a, like, we called the surety by the wrong name, I think.
Yeah, yeah, we called it.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll get that um, response from Robin, and I'll get that to you. Yeah.
Thank you. Right, last item is meeting minutes.
Do you want me to bring them up?
Sure.
Yeah. So we did get the two uh, red line minutes from.
From the clerk, thank you.
Yeah.
I think Dave did one of these, cause I, I wasn't at the meeting, so I can do all the credit.
All right, I got this.
I had, I had no issues with October nine. I had one question about October twenty-seven.
All right, let me, let me just open them both. Hold on. Okay, and then. Share. All right, I'll share the ten-nine. You see those?
Yep.
Did you have a particular place, Dan, that you?
I'm okay with nine. I have nothing, October nine.
I, I appreciate the care taken with these. Thank you, David.
What I do all day.
A lot of red ink, Dave.
I know.
Yeah.
I, I do, I do know that. Uh, Margaret, are you gonna keep scrolling down?
I'd like to say I missed this exercise, but I can't really say that, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, David Scott.
We have an additional deadline, I extension on the zoning amendments. I'm just noticing that.
Yeah, what did they push it to? Uh, uh, December?
Something, but we can talk about that in uh, other matters.
All right, uh, oh, can I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October ninth?
Oh, I suppose though, even though you're the red liner.
Well, let's, let's, let's keep this party going.
Yeah, uh, second, all in favor, weak says I.
Pascal, I.
Anderson, I.
I understand, cause I wasn't there.
Right, okay, thank you. Um, and then the next one, and Dan had an issue with one.
Just a question on the twenty-seventh. Was it the twenty-seventh, is that? So if you just go down to the end.
Again, appreciate.
Us, up a little bit. Keep going.
Kate, the care.
Yeah, that, so. So this uh, I just wanna read that paragraph.
The Rick Woodland?
Yeah, limiting the height of average building.
Mm-hmm.
Another regulation.
It's basically massing. He's concerned about massing.
So I just, I wasn't sure about the last line there. Um, did we talk about giving the planning board the authority to adopt design guidelines?
I think, I think that the conversation was around whether the planning board has authority to adopt residential design directives, or whether they would be guidelines. I think that's really.
So can we change this to a discussion followed about whether the planning board, so if you strike the.
About the planning board's authority to.
Or, yeah, so then if you strike regarding include.
About the planning board's authority to.
Well, we could just say discussion followed whether the planning board has the authority.
Well, I don't think that was the question. I think, I think it was that we have authority, it's just whether it's to issue rules or guidelines.
It was an abstract conversation.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't like a back and forth about whether we had the authority, it was what form it would take if we did something with design guidelines.
But don't we only have design guideline authority and site plan review?
Well, she, she seemed to think that there was.
Yeah. Design guidelines aren't really for single-family homes or subdivisions.
Right.
It's more if there's, it's, yeah, or if you have a downtown district or something.
Which is why it's in the zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
Right, so that was my memory of this conversation was we talked about what the planning board could and couldn't do, and, uh, cause I know Rick was concerned about massing in neighborhoods, right?
Yeah, he's concerned about, so, so he gave the example of the, of the um, little infill that happened on, I guess it was Cedar Street, where the houses were not to scale with the.
Right, and I thought what we discussed was like, we can't really tell somebody to.
Right.
Design that we.
And, and the Innis folks piped up and said, you know, you can, you can add those kinds of design guidelines to your zoning bylaw in those areas where you're granting a permit.
Do you wanna change this sentence then?
Um, how about we just say a discussion followed about design guidelines with respect to specific neighborhoods?
In that, yeah, well, it, it also was about, this is a zoning bylaw question, not a subdivision ordinance question, so.
Yeah.
And what, whether
and.
this was.
How about, with respect to specific neighborhoods under the purview of zoning?
Okay.
Does that work?
And, and I don't even sure about specific neighborhoods. It makes it sound like we were targeting a particular.
Yeah, yeah, but you're right.
I would say with respect to development requiring special permits under the zoning bylaw.
With respect to development.
Requiring, and don't say special permits, just say requiring permits under the zoning bylaw.
That's good.
Permitting under the zoning bylaw?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Except you have an extra I in permitting.
Oh, yeah, I'll get it. Um, so you want me to just period there?
Yes, please, and then nix the rest of it.
Okay.
And then.
That, that was the only concern I had, and I, I'll move to that we approve these as edited.
Wait, 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 the next paragraph, Dee Anderson questioned encouraging. I don't think I questioned encouraging it. Uh, I might just say.
I think you championed it, can I just say?
Dee Anderson sought clarification about the uh, ability and scope of, of.
Sort of clarification.
Cation about planning board's ability to encourage solar energy systems.
I think the reason it was phrased that way because it ended up being a discussion about if we promoted um, zoning, or if we promoted solar or required solar on some of those, if it would degrade the quality of the construction within uh, the homes itself. So I think that's why it ended up being worded the way it was, cause I remember reading it and I didn't change it because I didn't know what to say.
That's, that's okay. I mean, I think that these are all, I mean, I just wanted to clarify about its ability to encourage solar energy systems in subdivision developments. I think it's a very nuanced question, or subdivisions.
Yep.
Now.
I like the idea of you looking anti-soul.
Yeah, need a motion.
Well, my wife is gonna read these notes and then I'm gonna be sleeping on the couch for two weeks, so I, I can't have this in the record.
I renew the motion to approve these minutes as edited.
Second, Anderson's second.
All in favor, weak says.
Second emotion.
Okay, we have two seconds here, but that should be enough. Weak says I.
Pascal, I.
Anderson, I.
You?
Got it.
All right. Good, yeah, good. So, the item on the table that is another item that hadn't come up before this meeting, well, it did come up since the last meeting, but is we have had a resignation on the board, and so really interested in people's thoughts about um, potential folks we could reach out to who might be interested in being appointed and or running for election um, to the planning board. So if you have thoughts, also, um, I think, well, I think it would be a, a good thing if we invited Rick Woodland to the Linux meeting and just made a point of appreciating the work he's done. Um, for one thing, he's our representative to the um,
CPC.
Yeah, the, the Community Preservation Committee, so that's a fair amount of work, and we're running right into that season. I don't know who among us could step into those shoes at this point. I don't think I can. But um, do we, is he, Margaret, do you know, is he gonna fill out, you know, sort of complete his term there?
No.
For us?
Uh-uh, no.
So we have no representative on the CPC at present.
And they're asking for one. If anybody's interested.
Anyone feel compelled? Scott, you're the finance guy.
Well, I, I, I don't know what that role would entail.
Yeah. Unfortunately, at this time of year, quite a lot, cause all of the applications come in for funding, what, January, right?
They do December fifth this year.
But they all meet in January and.
Yeah, and then in January they meet and go over all the applications, and then they make the recommendations to town meeting. It is, it's, I don't know if it's a lot of work, but it is definitely work.
And it's judged on the, wh- what are the merits by which? So like if I, as the planning board, am I judging it as a member of the planning board, or judging it as a member of that committee per the committee's guidelines?
Yep, per the committee's guidelines. So the Community Preservation Committee has specific guidelines that they have to follow uh, as to whether projects are eligible for CPC funding. And there's a um, you know, there's a, a list, and there's guidance from the uh, Community Preservation Coalition from the state. Yeah, it's, it's.
I can, I can do it for now. Can I do it for now, and then maybe next year not do it, depending? I can do it for now, can I do it for now, and then maybe next year not do it, depending.
We have to, we have to renominate everybody for everything in, in the beginning of the year.
Scott, I can let them know that you wanna do it, and then because it wasn't on the agenda to vote on, you guys can't really vote on it, but um. So in December you can vote on it, so Scott could be official if you wanna do it then.
And I think in, in, I mean, he can go, you could go to a meeting, are they gonna meet between now and December? Or do they just basically wait for the applications to come in?
No, they're definitely meeting, I'm just not.
I don't know if you wanna just sit in on one of those and see what you think.
I mean, I, 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 I'll do it, I, I, you know, there's only four of us, so it's not. I'll do it for now, and then worse comes to worse, it's awful, and next year I'll try it upon or off on one of you, but I, I'm sure it won't be that bad.
Or the new person.
It's very kind, or find that you love it, I mean, Rick loved it, he was, that was his. When I talked to him after he wrote the little email on resigning, I, he said, the thing I'm gonna miss the most is my, my. Participation in the Community Preservation Committee, he really loves that work.
He did, yep.
He did get fired up giving us those reports.
He did.
Um, I have a question, so the, the appointment for the vacancy, does that mean we'll have? Two, two elections in the spring?
I have to run again if I'm gonna run.
Where?
If I'm done in twenty-six.
It's gonna be three seats up in April.
Why are there three seats up?
I have to run again, cause there was a clerical error.
I forgot. Wow. Okay. Yeah, all right, so.
Could be you, it could be just you left.
Dave's got five more, four more years.
And I'm.
That's true.
I'm like a cockroach, I'm gonna be here after everyone's gone.
Good to know.
So you were gonna say the other thing was the AG punted again on.
Yes, the other, that's the third item that we hadn't considered, and they've punted again, and it's December, what, Margaret, sixth?
I think it was the.
I just looked, it's the twenty-first.
Twenty-first, oh, Christmas time, lovely.
Yeah, that's what I said, I said.
Caput.
We also.
Stay in the year.
I reached out to Executive Office of Housing and Local Communities, and they said they won't review. Um, the districts until they get the AG's review, so.
It's a good thing they held us to those deadlines to, you know, pass three A.
To the fire.
I know, thank goodness, we got those in on time.
All right.
I move that we adjourn until December eleventh, seven PM, are we still by Zoom?
Well, um, I guess that's up to you. I have other committees that are meeting at the COA building. Um, if you'd prefer to meet in person, you could do it there. I am really hopeful that we'll be upstairs by then, but I can't guarantee it.
All right, I'd stay by Zoom then.
I have a conflict that night at five to, it goes till seven thirty or eight. I maybe will get out early and get here. Does anyone else know if they have a conflict that night? It's gonna preclude them, because then we might have a quorum issue if I can't get out of my other thing.
December eleventh?
Yeah.
I have a filing deadline, but it should be done before seven.
Think it should be okay.
I, I'm, I'm fine.
I'll still try and make it, cause it sounds like there's gonna be a lot going on.
So you're gonna, yeah, you're gonna have Topsfield Road, but we could put that on the agenda a little later, like we could take some other stuff early if you want. Just so that Dave, gives David enough time to get there.
Well, and we'll, we have some, something more on Penguin Hall by then.
Maybe, I don't know. Not sure.
So it could be, it could be busy. I, I was gonna say you could start at seven thirty, but if we're gonna have, you know, two hours or three hours of.
No, that's true, we could start the meeting at seven thirty. Um, I don't know what else is gonna be on the agenda on the eleventh. I don't have any other projects that I see coming before us, before then. If you want, we could move the, have the meeting at seven thirty, David, do you think that would help you?
I won't lie, it would help, but I know it would be, it would impact a view, so I'm happy to. If there's a way, yeah.
Yeah.
That's true, we did, uh, and nobody's necessarily pining to go back, I mean. If you all wanna shuffle the agenda so that there's a little bit of a buffer at the start and let people know that they'll be coming on closer to seven thirty. That's great, but I am gonna try and make the meeting uh, on time either way, so.
So why don't we stick with seven and see. How that goes.
All right.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn us, if there's no, nothing else that we.
I already did that.
Oh, you did, I missed that. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor, weak says I.
Pasco, I.
Anderson, I.
Yeah, I.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Good night, be well, happy Thanksgiving.